All right. No wisher I am. I Tyler Gibney.
Tyler Gibney.
solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
and the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
and that I will faithfully and impartially.
and that I will faithfully and impartially.
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
discharge all the duties of the office of council at large.
discharge all duties of the office of council at large.
in Algonah.
in Algonah.
as now or here and after required by law.
in Algonah as now or here and after required by law.
You're good. Thank you. Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay. Okay, it's five twenty-five on Monday, April the fifth, and we'll call this regular city council meeting to order. We're delayed by twenty-five minutes this afternoon due to a situation in the community that was beyond our control. So this council meeting is being held in person also by conference call. And if you would stand and please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call Deb.
Don.
Here.
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 Rodney.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Thank you. I would entertain a motion then to approve tonight's agenda with the one.
We've got a couple of items.
Oh, okay.
Just for a few other items, sensitive items. Basically, I think the proposal would be to move the item. One. To be addressed under new business. So we can take them at same order.
So you just want to move them up, you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so seventeen becomes nine, and then nine falls in after twenty-one?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, move to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Vote, please.
John.
Yes.
Jody. Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Motion carried. Thank you. Across the mayor's desk, I just want to thank our videographer Colin Petten tonight. We hope that everyone had a happy Easter yesterday. The weather was certainly a nice, nice day compared to a year ago. Remember, we had a blizzard a year ago, so this was a pleasant, pleasant change. We want to welcome Tyler Gibney. We just swore him in. We welcome him, our newest member of the city council, or councilman at large, so welcome. And just a reminder, the fireman's breakfast, I should maybe have Mike speak to this, but the fireman's breakfast is coming up Saturday.
It's this Saturday, yes.
Yep.
Turned at six till noon, twelve-thirty, I think.
One o'clock?
Yeah.
Something like that.
I don't remember.
So we're satisfied?
Yeah, very good, yeah. So everyone, yeah, please come out and enjoy some pancakes and eggs and help support the firemen. We appreciate what they do. And then just a note, last Thursday, April the first, I was happy to proclaim that day Al Look Day because Al has been in radio broadcasting for fifty years and is still active. So that's pretty remarkable, so. Council have anything?
I have a couple informational items like that. One is right after the meeting here, I'm going to be running up to Bancroft. My wife and I are in Backstreet Bancroft Play, which is coming up Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. I'm trying desperately to learn all my life. Anyway, there are still tickets available for Thursday if anybody's interested. Also, this nice weather. I've been managing the community gardens. They're over on the west edge of town on Ridgely Street, and we have some openings in the garden available. So if there's anybody would like to do some gardening, I would invite them to contact me. The best way is with email, algonahgardens, with an S on the end there. I'll go to gardens@hotmail.com. So if you're interested in gardening, let me know. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have anything? Okay, hearing none, we'll move then to number six. Update from the city administrator, Jacob Yeo.
Just one item. One of the four residents on a coming project with the North Main reconstruction. So that project, which will go from Commercial Street to Lucas Street, four blocks there, Rennings, traveling excavating is the general contractor. And that project is expected to get underway here in the next one to two weeks. The exact start date is to be announced. But that'll be a mini workday contract, complete reconstruction. So when that road closes, it will be closed for a couple of months. Just wanted to, we've sent this information out to the residents that belong there, but if they're listening or anyone else, that would make updates on the project as it goes. On our city website as well as our Facebook page, we've got a link to the project website where announcements will be posted, progress updates, as well as you can sign up for an email or text message notifications. We need maybe some work done. So the website is clients.bolton-mang.com/algona. I'd like to say to go to our website or Facebook page if you find one there and check the site out or sign up for updates.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Agenda item number seven, this is the citizens' opportunity to address the council with any items that are not on today's agenda. Anyone on the telephone? Okay. Okay, hearing none, then we'll move to agenda item number eight, which is the consent agenda and includes approving the minutes from the March fifteenth council meeting, approving the bills to be paid this cycle, as well as Jacob's administrator's report.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
John.
Yes.
Jody. Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Harley.
Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, so we'll move to new business. I paged, well, yeah. Agenda item number seventeen, which is now number nine, but it's a resolution concerning the North Street, North Main Street project.
Part of the North Main Street project is we have to get a engineering firm on board to do the construction material tests while that goes. So this is a resolution to approve an agreement. The recommended firm is Chosen Valley Testing, and this will be a service that's called for as needed based on the site. All right, Wes, can I add that? And we did solicit proposals for these services.
We're going to move to the mic.
Yeah. So we did solicit proposals for these three testing firms, two of which are based in the city, one of which is about a storm lake. Does everyone have these in their packets? So if you got a chance to look at them in detail at all, there's a lot of information here, and each of them kind of comes up to a different subtotal at the end. The subtotals are our guestimates, just based on how many times they think they're going to have to come to the site to run the various tests on the concrete, the soils, or the aggregate materials and so on. So we really tried to look at a couple of different things, kind of their unit rates, their unit prices per hour in their test and things like that. They all were pretty terrible when it came to that. So it really kind of came down to on the totals is it was just their best guess as to what the overall testing costs were going to be. In reviewing these, I'm talking with city staff. The recommendation is to go with Chosen Valley Testing because they did do the soil boring testing for Snap-on Drive and the industrial park and will be the testing firm on that project as a result. And so it just makes sense to combine the two. There may be some efficiencies of when they're in town for one of the projects, they can do testing on the other and save a little bit that way. But all three firms are reputable and provide quality services, but that would be our recommendation.
I'd make a motion to approve it is Chosen Valley testing for the geotechnical engineering and service agreement.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
John.
Yes.
Jody. Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number eighteen is a resolution approving DOT RISE grant agreement.
As I shared with council previously, the city applied for a revitalized Iowa Soundson County economy grant for the Iowa DOT to fund a portion of the construction of Snap-on Drive. RISE funds are going to be used to provide access to new lots for commercial development. We were awarded up to seven hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, or seven hundred and thirty-two thousand thirteen dollars, or up to fifty percent of the total eligible project cost, whichever is less. This was awarded at the March ninth Iowa Transportation Commission meeting. The conditions of the agreement, the key ones are in terms of providing access to the new lots will be to about the sixty percent, so more than fifty percent of these six lots and thirteen acres along Snap-on Drive for private development will be used for eligible commercial development. So ineligible projects would be things like engineering offices or restaurants, whereas this is really geared towards, you know, heavy or, you know, rather commercial use of manufacturing or warehousing. So we just need to have a majority of those lots end up qualified for that use. And for some reason, if we don't, you know, a portion of the funds would have to be gave back to the DOT. But given we've got, you know, several acres to go in terms of development, you know, we're comfortable with that. You know, we'll be able to give a majority of those with a ineligible use by DOT. So this resolution offered is the mayor to sign that grant agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Harley, a second by Don. Is there any discussion?
Agree.
Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
John.
Yes.
Jody. Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number nineteen, this is a resolution pertaining to Moore Street and Snap-on Drive.
This resolution is the ordering of bids, approval of plans, and setting the date and time for the public hearing on the plan specifications, form of contract, estimated cost for the Moore Street Snap-on Drive and utility improvements project. Wes want to speak on this one?
So as Jacob indicated, we did receive grant funding through RISE for this project as it was due in this previous agenda item. And the DOT has now reviewed the plans and specifications and given us the go-ahead as of today to go out and solicit for bids for the work. So the project entails the construction of Snap-on Drive from Highway eighteen down to Powthor Street, concrete pavement, utilities, sanitary sewer water, storm sewer, grading of the lots within the first base and the industrial park along some stormwater detention basins, and then the two blocks of Moore Street that are scheduled for reconstruction this year between College Street and Nebraska Street. So with that, we're in a point, or position here where we're ready to move forward with bidding and looking for council to authorize that via this resolution. Unless there are any questions.
Motion to approve. Let's get started.
Second.
I'll second.
Here are a motion from Rodney and a second from Jody. Vote, please, Deb.
John.
Yes.
Jody. Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number twenty is to approve the two thousand twenty-one BRAC route.
Hello, everyone. I'm Jennifer Harrington. I'm a Rotarian in this capacity here today, and I'm a member of the BRAC committee. BRAC, as you guys may or may not know, is the bike ride around the Sioux, and it's our fundraising effort to provide bikes for kids that need that here in county. The Kuanis does a great job of providing helmets and putting on a bike rodeo and to all the third graders, and I believe fourth graders this year. What Rotary does is we identify kids who don't have bikes and give them one. Typically, it's anywhere from three to six bikes a year, although some years have been as much as ten bikes. For those of you who remember this wonderful talk last year, you'll notice that this is the same route that we had planned in two thousand twenty due to the wonderful pandemic. It was canceled, but we are going to, we're basically going to move forward with it this year again. It will start in Algonah. You will go to Whittamore. And then if you want, go back to Algonah. That's our short route. Or if not, go all the way down to West Bend and around. We talked to the county who's approved this route, and we are talking with Whittamore and West Bend. Both anticipate to have kind of town events or stops for vipers that are around. Rotary, we were actually going to start here at McGregor, kind of, you know, in the Carnegie Library lawn, if you will. And people will park in the parking lot behind Billy Joe's and Feed Mill. We're going to have the Rotary Doughmobile, and we're hoping to advertise that heavily so that even people who don't ride bikes can come and get doughnuts beforehand. We, registration begins at seven fifteen. Bike rides will start at eight. I believe Eldon Myers is going to be our honorary, we usually have an honorary figure of the town that we acknowledge, and Eldon Myers is going to be that this year. And then we're also successfully avoiding kind of the McGregor Bridge, if you notice. So that's kind of why we make people do a hill first thing on this bike ride, just to really crush your soul before going to the door. That's what we like to do. But with that, I would one obviously urge you to kind of approve Algonah's participation in here. And then also just keep it in mind, you know, this is a great fundraising effort to make sure that kids do have bikes around the county and just don't feel so left out, you know, at a certain age and time in their life. You guys got any questions for me? Oh, and it's going to be on June twelfth.
Okay.
Sorry, that's probably important information. Are there any other questions?
No, only to suggest, only to suggest people maybe talk to Eldon about battery assist, you know, for coin of that.
And then no wind that day would be helpful.
Yeah, good luck.
No wind that day would be really helpful.
Any other requests there?
Yeah.
Well, thank you, guys. We appreciate you doing that.
That's good to have this back and move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Harley, a second by Mike. Any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
John.
Yes.
Jody. Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Hi.
Motion carried. The BRAC route is approved. Agenda item number twenty-one, then this is a considerate request to forgive sanitary sewer charges.
One twenty-one North Hall Street, last month had a water leak that was not discovered for nearly a month. Ultimately, the meter read was four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, approximately cubic feet, or three forty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven gallons of water used. The sewer bill for that time is projected to be two thousand six hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents. In the past, the council has waived sanitary sewer charges. The way we count, first the way we count those is it's based off water usage, which is metered by AMU, with the theory that, you know, that water has to go somewhere, and so it's assumed to go down the drain. And there's been instances where there's a leak or a break, and staff can go out and inspect and verify that, oh, yeah, it just went into the soil. You know, we've waived portions of those bills in the past because it did not enter our system and did not get treated. When the leak was discovered, I talked with the folks at AMU. They estimated it was about four feet in the basement at that time, and that they were able to pump out about two-thirds of that. You know, we're looking at three forty-three thousand gallons. You know, that was filled the basement several times over. The North Hall, or the, that water tower, three hundred thousand gallons, just for some perspective on the amount of use. So the request, they, you know, came in last week of the activists who discovered and asked the city to give away a portion of the bill. Based on the information we have at this time, we're only aware the water that didn't go down the drain would be that amount pumped out by AMU. But I guess the kind of item to look at is if it would amount the council wants to entertain forgiveness. So I'm kind of giving our understanding, and I'll let you guys speak.
I'm here over in the likely area on the somewhere in time antique store. And we had water in the basement, four foot deep, and AMU came out, helped us pump it out. We tried to shut the valve off on the street, but it was malfunctioning. We didn't shut it off. So we had to wait to, weighted in a critical line, right? Eight inches right above meters here, eight inches above the meters where it broke, so it could go, but it didn't go easy. Never ever broke before in there. We didn't catch it by our way because we were shut down because of COVID. And they said, we have lead pipe coming into the basin for a service. And they said, well, if we're changing out that valve, we should change the lead service also. We have a concrete patio right there. And I said, well, I'll just cut, I'll help move that patio where you just dig straight in, be cheaper for them. So we were just talking about that with Jared. Help you guys out and consider giving us some return, I guess, some back on the cost. It's around thirty-nine, thirty-nine hundred.
Four-six-hundred.
Four-six-hundred.
Four-six-hundred dollars for a monthly water bill.
It was all clean water, wasn't sewage water. It's clear water, you know. I told them, maybe they almost drained it as pure water, contaminants or nothing. They pumped out quite a bit, like I said, two-thirds on the street. And there was no chemicals enough on that basement. Kind of ruined our stuff here in there, but that's our stuff.
So we're only dealing with the share that's the sewer charge without the amount of water charge? And that's what the twenty-six is, right?
Correct. Yeah, the AMU, their water bill estimated a thousand four seventy, and the estimated sewer is that two thousand six hundred and forty-seven.
Yeah.
What's the normal sewer charge for a month? Any idea?
I asked John Milstein, he said the water had been, had not been used in the property since two thousand fifteen. So there's no baseline of monthly usage. This is tracked out.
We just have one store, which, just for us, not for people that come in. So it would be very minimal. I'm going to waive the entire sewer charge.
I think we may want to consider our past precedent in terms of, you know, if it goes down the drain, it goes into our system and we have to treat it at the plant even if it's clean. You know, and it's not, you know, in terms of the other uses, there are paying for the water to go down there. The amount that we estimated that AMU pumped out as a, you know, total usage was probably between ten and fourteen percent. The rest, we suspect, went down the drain as there were multiple floor drains. I'm not sure if there's any others suspected where that water would have gone.
How would they get in their estimate? Was two-thirds just spitballing?
So that was, from AMU, that was just, they showed up, and, you know, that was just what.
Ran a pump X amount of hours and threw a number at the wall?
Yeah, what their rough estimate was. So I just kind of did some real kind of quick scenarios of, you know, this is a large basement, we'd be looking at the volume. You know, and say if it was five feet deep and AMU pumped out seventy-five percent of that water, and, you know, this isn't factoring, you know, items that are in there that are taking that volume, but if we just assumed it was all water, and that would be, you know, fourteen point six percent of the total water used.
Took about three hours to get the side to shut off manually, the valve to shut up on the outside. Water has come in pretty quick from that broken line. Couldn't even shut it off. I don't know how much that one turned. So what's fourteen percent then?
Some of that fee is taxes. You know, so the total, total use, you know, just the water would be that two thousand three hundred and five. Fourteen percent of that would be three hundred and twenty-two dollars.
It won't be for you guys, I don't see any also. So Jacob, are you saying that in the past, stuff like this has happened, and we've paid whatever percentage we, whatever percentage we did not go through the city?
Yeah, we waived, you know, the one I most familiar with because I did the inspection on, you know, they had a leak. But it was in the basement, in a dirt basement. You could tell where the leak was, and it just, you know, you could tell that had gotten to the ground. And so on that one, we asked AMU, you know, what their typical usage is, you know, average. And what their, you know, peak was that month. And then they basically took the peak minus that average usage and said, well, this is what we estimate. It went to the ground, not to the sewer system, so that's a little forgive. But yeah, our position is that if it goes into the system and it has to get treated, you know, then it incurs, you know, wear and tear on our infrastructure and, you know, should be treated on any other water that enters the system. Yeah, I don't like necessarily having that position because it is tough at the same time in terms of the city and our policies. You know, we can't just be the backup insurer for, you know, homeowners if their property owners didn't catch something. You know, that's their responsibility. Often the water went into our system.
There's a portion of the water left on the concrete coming. The next day was all gone, so about four inches of water actually went down the drain. About thirty-five, thirty-five, thirty-six.
Of the water that was discovered that day. Yeah. I mean, that.
Forehand, I'm not sure how.
Yeah, but like, the basement would have been filled several times over.
I guess I confused too as how this was not caught. On AMU's end, I mean, I see John's reasoning that the meter was covered, but I mean, you're talking fourteen thousand gallons of water every day, extra for twenty-four days, when nobody's watering a yard. There's got to be a red flag coming somewhere that.
So my understanding time with John is the break interfered with the communication system that they do have on there as a backup. You know, first off, it's the owner's responsibility that they have that communication system on there. But the break occurred in a location in a way that basically fried that communication device. The meter kept going, and then when they went to do the billing and do their readings, they found that usage was high and that they couldn't get a reading from this house. And so that's when they realized, you know, that, yeah, that there was an issue there. But there was the fact that, yeah, that ice cap basically fried that water. So like, you described it, that didn't get caught right away because otherwise I'd have to do that somewhere earlier.
So we do have a motion on the floor to forgive the entire sewer charge. Is there a second? Okay, hearing none, then that mo- Okay, hearing none, then that motion died from lack of a second?
I want to forgive as much as possible, I'm just trying to figure out what is the right percentage in this situation? Because we also dealt with another AMU that was fairly expensive a while back. And we forgave and I doubt we've gotten much onto that. So I think we have to think about that situation too, that we probably have no money from. And I want to be as, as good to these homeowners as we can, Jacob makes a point, you know, we all take responsibility as homeowners. What is the correct one? Uh, is it? Two thirds was pumped out, is it one third? We forgive two thirds and one third?
And that was the amount of water pumped out.
I understand, but I mean, at this point.
I think we need to, I mean.
Like I said, based on the calculations of, you know, just roughly what AMU pumped out, you know, for generous and saying they pumped out seventy-five percent, it was five feet high. You know, that's only six thousand six hundred eighty-three cubic feet, which is a little less than fifteen percent of the total usage. Because it was going for so long.
Under normal circumstances, wouldn't AMU's equipment have caught that issue? And is it, is it fair to say that there was a failure on the equipment side as well? I, I mean, is that normal? If, if there is flooding, it's not gonna, it's not gonna.
I can't speak to, for AMU on that. Under normal circumstances, their, their backup communications device would have flagged it as, you know, having a high reading, but that is not the, you know, the first line of defense or what, you know, it's, that's just an additional tool that unfortunately, that doesn't seem to work this time. But that's, that's not the, the end-all of determining what leaks are.
Yeah, I'll say from experience, that AMU is pretty good about calling you within a day or two if your, something was left on and you have a lot of usage. But realistically, it's more of a service, you know, from them, it's not like their responsibility to do that. But, yeah, I think this is kind of a unique situation where it's in the basement. A lot of times when we've had these before, maybe there's a, you know, water left on out in the yard or something where there's pretty clear that it did not go into the sewer system. Those are a lot easier to work with. I guess in this one, I'd suggest, because of the unique situation, that we maybe forgive half. Any other ideas on that?
Is there some pump down there at all that pumps about?
Yes.
How long was that running? Any idea? How long does that pump out for a minute?
It's fifteen hundred gallons per minute, or for, that's how much, how much per minute, but it's a two-inch pipe coming out.
And it was continually running and then it was hit with.
I'm not sure.
Where's it pumped to? Does it pump out to the street or?
It pumps out into, well, the building is this one over here.
Yeah, it's this one over here. Yeah, yeah, I didn't know where it pumps to.
It comes out into the space between water connection and us. Um, when the city went through and, and had somebody inspect all of these earlier, a few years ago, they told us we needed to pump it through and up and that's what we did.
So it pumps up on top of the, the ground, you're saying, okay.
Yeah, if that was running continuously, that would have burned up after a while, by some point would have, I guess.
It will burn up if the water's, if it's pumping water, if it's pumping, there's no water in there.
Yeah, I see.
It's true.
It's totally, the whole thing is submerged.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what it's meant to do. It should, that's what it's meant to do.
That's what works the best.
Because by putting water in the shower, however.
Could.
That too.
Could have bored kicked off.
Yeah.
Anybody know from city whether that pump was running the whole time?
Electric, how that water would plug into this, sort of a heating.
No, because it did. Yeah, if that pump wasn't, yeah, that pump wasn't running the whole time.
Right.
And electricity was two feet up on the wall. You know, it would have kicked on, you were saying about fifteen percent, some pump would have been running, add a little bit there, let's say twenty-five percent, does that sound fair to everybody?
I, I still think we need to do more.
Yeah, I was thinking more, I think, I do agree that we have to watch our precedents that we're setting with this. But in, there's so many unknowns with this one. I think, you know, next time if this happens, you know, AMU needs to hopefully be a little bit more accountable in telling us how much water they're pumping out of a situation like this, so we know better. And I don't know what the, I don't really get all the billing issues and why they didn't catch it exactly. But I mean, that seems like, that's the, that's the issue here that we had before, a long time ago, possibly. I don't know all the details about that.
Well, somewhere in there.
We're having it again, I mean, I really like AMU to take a closer.
We lost a lot more there.
And on the AMU really, I mean, or the AMU pumping, it was really just trying to.
Get it so they could service it.
Yeah, like, yeah, so they could get it, because yeah, it was four, you know, feet when they got there and it was just kind of, you know, emergency response at that point. And it was just us asking them afterwards, like, if you had to estimate how much of, you know, you pumped out, trying to figure out what might, what information can be gathered to, to go, to be able to factor what, what didn't go down the sanitary sewer. And that was just, you know, they responded four feet, they thought about two thirds. But, you know, those aren't formal measurements by any means.
I agree, but these.
And they were in, you know, with chest-high waders.
Yeah, I agree, but for the homeowner, whether they're coming to the city to get help with this, or if they're going to their own homeowner's insurance.
We have to have, if you're.
Okay, so, but a different person, if they're having the same issues, they need better, better numbers, better concrete information for them, so.
Right, right now, the way it stands is that, you know, the bill for the, the whole thing, you know, because that's the water they use. You know, so it's really on, you know, what, what exception do you want to grant?
Yeah, I think this is just something that we have to decide what we're comfortable with, because there's nothing clear enough to base it on. That's why I'd propose half, if somebody else has other thoughts that I'd like to know.
I agree with that too.
If we go with half, I mean, is there a way you work with them on the billing? And I mean, does law is paid once, at one time, or can they? Can you set up a payment plan? If necessary, they may, I mean, they maybe just want to pay it, I don't know. But they've been very honest, they've been here, they've been very honest about everything that's went on. Not hiding anything, I appreciate that, so.
So if, just, Congress, so that I'm clear too, fifty percent, what kind of dollars are we?
About thirteen hundred dollars.
Okay, so it's half of this twenty-six forty-seven.
Half of the sewer.
Just the sewer, yeah, half of the sewer.
Okay, just so that that's all clear and we know dollar amounts, what we're talking about. Yes.
When I spoke with John, AMU's plan is to, you know, bill for the full amount of water used because, you know.
Because it was used.
And with their bikes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I guess I'll change that to a motion then, that we forgive half of this twenty-six forty-seven thirty-five. Okay, we have a motion by Harley, a second from Don, is there any other discussion?
Just that I hope we work with them if necessary for payment plan.
Okay, vote please, Deb.
Yes.
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 Motion carried, thank you. Okay, so do we now, Jacob, want to go back to the top of the agenda under new business? Okay, the number, okay.
Number nine.
Number nine, okay. So then this is a resolution approving transfer of funds.
So AMU, AMU, they operate on a calendar year. Their electric and water utility, maybe calculation that they have a surplus. There's agreement that they will transfer a portion of that surplus to the city. As a benefit to being a city-owned utility and to the city. And there's also the payment that they make in, in what taxes, as if they were, as opposed to they were a private utility provider. The AMU board met and approved, determined that they had a surplus of funds in both the electric and the water utilities. And passed resolutions proposing the transfer, which requires the city to concur and agree of a transfer of four hundred thousand for the electric utility and forty-five thousand for the water utility, for total of four hundred and forty-five thousand.
And this is in line with past years?
Yes. A, a few years ago, they went to a set amount on the surplus. It used to be a percent target, but they got to the cycle, they increased rates to, you know, pay for needs. But then when they increased rates, then the percent they, the city also goes up. You know, really that nice, but, you know, it wasn't that tense. So this is the agreement that I believe was, it's been before my time.
It's been here quite a while.
Yeah.
I'd move to approve.
Second.
Okay, a motion from Harley, a second from Rodney, is there any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Yes.
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 Motion carried, thank you. Agenda item number ten is a resolution pertaining to or approves a settlement agreement with Hy-Vee.
These next three items, resolutions pertaining to package checks. So this first one's to approve the acknowledgement and settlement agreement with Hy-Vee for a package check, Paul, you maybe to add to that?
No, it's just, it's set by state law, when you see the amounts and things like that, it's set by state law. And what happens is we, we get the word from the Attorney General's Office as far as, you know, they did these, they did these spot checks. And the city, you know, years ago, the city council decided that the money's gonna go somewhere because it's state law. The employees themselves have a separate fine they have to pay, so that's, that's just because they sold to an underage person. But now the entity, you know, the store owner has to pay a, pay a fine, and it's set by state law. So if, you know, the city can go through this process and, and collect the money, or the Attorney General's Office will do it and they'll, they'll have to pay the state the money. So this is just something that, you know, I've set up a system with, you know, with different documents and things like that. And you, you have the, the resolution for, for Hy-Vee here. And I always have the, the entity sign and, and, you know, an agreement where they acknowledge that this is, you know, that this is something that happened. And they always send the check, make sure they send the check, you know, with, with the, with the document. So again, it's, and I emphasize to the store owner that, you know, this, this is a penalty set by state law, so that they're not coming to the city.
Big upset, yeah.
We'd like to, you know, give it reduced to a different number, because it's, we don't set it, state law sets it. It's going, they're not to pay it to somebody, and the city has always set up a system where, you know, the money might as well, you know, stay with the city. Because again, it's within our police department that the reserves run these operations.
Move to approve.
Yeah.
Second.
Here we have a motion from Mike and a second from Don, is there any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Don. Yes.
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 Motion carried, thank you. So agenda item number eleven is the same, approves a settlement, this is with River City Vape Company.
Correct, even though they're no longer in town, when the violation occurred, they were in town. And I've been dealing with the owner who now has a place in Mason City.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Motion and a second, is there any other discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Yes.
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 That motion carried also. Agenda item number twelve is also, this is a settlement agreement with SLJ Investments.
This is the one-stop shop. And this is, that's our LLC name, but it's the one-stop shop here in town.
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Did you get that, Deb? Okay. Okay, vote please.
Don. Yes.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Agenda item number thirteen is a resolution pertaining to the GEO notes.
So this resolution, is a resolution amendment, the, the resolution passed on March first, authorizing the issuance, basically just takes care of the, the fine line we negotiate in terms of West Texas, that's what the final payment schedules are. So religious, the difference between when we did the sale that day, but the final details. So that, that resolution proves that, and then we are still set for a April twenty, close in May.
Motion to approve resolution.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Yes.
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 Motion carried, thank you. Agenda item number fourteen is a resolution concerning GEO loan notes. Fourteen.
Oh, so for the twenty-one, twenty-one A series, this is a point, U M B Bank of West Des Moines to serve as the paying agent, your registrar and transcriber to facilitate borrowing.
Move to approve, progress.
I have a motion by Mike, a second from Tyler, is there any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Yes.
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 That motion carried, thank you. Agenda item number fifteen is a resolution involving the industrial park land purchase.
You know, this is the twenty-nineteen redemption. So when we purchased the industrial park in twenty-nineteen, we did a loan with West Iowa Bank at three point three percent. We were planning to refinance that loan and we sold bonds in twenty-twenty-one B. We were able to renegotiate with West Iowa Bank to reduce that interest rate. So we made a cost effective sell on the bond market. So fifteen, items fifteen, sixteen go together. Fifteen authorizes the redemption or basically paying off of our existing, our existing twenty-nineteen loan. And then item number sixteen, authorizes a new loan agreement, Series twenty-twenty-one B. And that's basically the loan to, to pay off the twenty-nineteen series. And talking with our bond council in terms of just a record keeping standpoint, they suggested doing redemption of a brand-new loan as opposed to refinancing, just to, to make record keeping a bit clearer. So that's why there's two parts to it. The new loan would be on the next item, free and issued, so that would be a two point two percent interest rate.
Okay, so we'll, we'll take agenda item number fifteen first. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a, a motion by Harley, a second from Don, any other discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Yes.
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 Motion carried, thank you. And then agenda item number sixteen that Jacob spoke about. Move to approve also. Okay, we have a motion and a second there, any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Yes.
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 Motion carried, thank you. Okay, we'll move then to agenda item number twenty-two, which is some information to approve police radio repeaters. And Chief Powell's is with us today.
Okay, what we're dealing with is issues with these radios. Of course, we got radios that are in cars and radios that are on the side, some portable radios. And the state of LA is in the process of switching over from the analog system to the digital system. And we're one of the. And we're one of the counties that have done that. Now, what we've discovered in this is our car radios work really well. And our portable radios work, sometimes they work pretty well, other times not. And what we, a lot of times have discovered is if we're in certain parts of town, like the southwest side of town, you know, the terrain is kind of down. And so we have a tough time even outside of, outside of buildings. But inside of buildings, we really have problems. But there's also places around town like schools, the hospitals, stuff. So those are all areas. This part of town, of course, has got a bunch of apartments and three facilities at the, at Good Samaritan, the swimming pool, and of course, places like the hospital and schools, all areas that could, you could have some real critical situations. And so not being able to get through, and, and sometimes those are important situations. Ambulance calls and, and a whole lot of different things, domestics. Our, our, our officers can hear the dispatcher, but when they key the mic, they can't. We get a tone that our transmissions aren't going out. So, and this was consistently, and so we had to come up with a system. This is not something that I want to be here addressing. It's, it's more of a necessity. What we've got is, I think, falls into two areas. Number one, it's a safety issue, safety for us and safety for the people that we're dealing with with domestic peace victim or whatever. The other thing is, at this point, we got prior knowledge that a problem exists, and I, and I think we have civil litigation issue potentially. So we're pretty well deemed to act, of course. So in dealing with Electronic Specialties on a solution, they come up with, in-car repeater system. Basically, this antenna right here is not strong enough to do what we needed to do a lot of the times. Car radio's fine. So the, in the absence of, being the authority on radio systems, which I certainly am not, but the in-car repeater, basically in a nutshell does, is when we get out of the car, it activates a, the in-car repeater, which is mounted in the car. So when we're, when we're in that mode and we go to transmit, the transmission goes from this antenna back to our patrol car and goes out under the, our regular radio antenna, which is working just fine. So, and Barry from Electronic Specialties says, this is a legitimate fix for this, it's not a band-aid approach. Jeff Mortensen, the owner of Electronic Specialties, was able to come up with a demo for us to use. So I had him put it in one of our officer's patrol cars. And I said, you go out and you test this in schools and different areas around town, apartment buildings and hospitals and all this. And he did that, and he did use the portable, that was a part of the, the in-car repeater system, and also another one that was not. So major difference. It worked almost every, every time that they did that. So it was a tested solution. Unfortunately, with that, it comes a cost. And the, we've got eleven patrol cars. Our ATV does not have a radio in it. So with our eleven patrol cars, the cost itself of the equipment is sixty-six thousand five hundred nine dollars and eighty-five cents. The, the other fees, which are like FCC fees, are eight hundred forty-five dollars. Now Jeff informs me that might not be totally correct, but it's not real far off. And with those figures, sixty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty-four, eighty-five might be a little bit more than that. But something we don't want to do, something we pretty well have to do. You know, it's not a luxury item for us. It's a necessity. I wish I wasn't here having to ask for a trans, just type of transfer of money.
In terms of other items, our options, research, we did have a, an analog version for a repeater that costs about half as much. But the recommendation was moving to this digital system, to stick with that technology and this would future-proof us, as well as this is something that as, you know, we replace vehicles that can get taken out and installed back in. We did go or went to the E ninety-one, the county board asked for funding, which was not provided. And then, but they didn't, didn't receive a donation from the pharmacist mutually for the, the employee foundation.
Yeah, that's right, David. Thanks for bringing that up. The pharmacist mutual employee fund, foundation gave us fifty-five hundred dollars, and that's a group that's been tremendously helpful, a long force, and they're very generous for us, and, and they did help us on this. And fifty-five hundred dollars is real money.
Good. Well, this looks like it's a requirement, although it's had some time been in a dead area for cell phones, and you know how that is when you're desperately trying to use them. So with the police, they'd say this is a necessity, so I would move to approve.
I would second. And correct me if I'm wrong, digital is going, is, it was mandated by the FCC, then they backpedaled, but now it's still going to be fully required here in the next few years. That's the reason we started switching everything over to digital?
Uh, yes, yes. And that would be with the radios, that is correct. And it varies a little bit within car repeaters, as I understand. But basically, this is digital, and so is our car radios, but yes, that's right. There's, there's people jumping on board, so to speak, and at different, at different times. Under the leadership of David Penn, we are on board. It's a while, but we are on board that we're ahead in the game with over several counties.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Don?
Yes.
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 Tyler.
Motion carried. Thank you, chief. Move to agenda item number twenty-three, and this is approve a pay app in regards to the library renovation.
All right. This is the third pay application from Angel Construction. The amount requested is one hundred eighty-four thousand twenty-one dollars and sixty-three cents. The project architect has reviewed and recommends approval. The balance of the project after this payment will be eight hundred forty-five thousand nine hundred twenty-two dollars and nine cents. Things are moving along. I think all the sheetrock is done now, so it's really starting to come together. And we're still, still on track for, in the May substantial condition, hopefully even work.
Perfect. We'll do approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Don?
Yes.
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 Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number twenty-four is to approve a change order with the library renovation project.
So the change orders, if you actually look at the document, are listed six and seven, but just there's an accounting function on the software that they're using, there's one that's throwing up all the numbers off. So this is actually the change order number five, brought to council for consideration. In the south portion of the building, that second set of doors when you come in, one will go to, to storage, the other one will go to that, that south classroom. The south classroom door got taken out and demolished, so that door needs to be entirely replaced, frame and door. And then with that, we're doing the matching hardware, so it fits with the rest of the room. And then with that, the existing window in the other door that goes to the storage are in fine condition, but just so they match the rest of the new style, we're going to have those painted. The, the main expense is the door and the matching hardware for the one that needs to be replaced. But this change order is to replace that door, adjust, and adjust the painting, and the change order minus two thousand eight hundred sixty-seven dollars and four cents.
Now, these two change orders are ones I have some issues with. I mean, first off, you hate change orders, because when bids come in, you know, you can look at a reasonable price, and then change orders is where you really get killed. I mean, the price of things is ridiculously high. The door, I guess you'd have, was this a mistake that the door should have been left? It was not. Otherwise, I would say, where was the door on the original, you know, plans for the project? How could you miss putting a door in?
The, the door was not in the original plans. I believe it was damaged when they did the asbestos removal around it. That required basically the whole thing to get.
Okay. So there's some reason to that. I guess my issue is maybe more with the next one. I'll put down a five foot by five foot pieces of metal for a couple thousand dollars. Holy crap. Anyway, I guess we need to operate on this one first. Number twenty-four. Yeah.
Move to approve.
Second.
Here we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Don?
Yes.
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 Mike?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Motion carried. Agenda item number tw- twenty-five is change order with the library.
So this is for the sidewalk, the southwest part of the building. Just holding that there. So when you're looking at the existing sidewalk and where it ends, and then when you go to enter, there is about a two inch lift maybe, and you don't want that, you want that foot. So they were proposing to take out or either build upon a few of the panels right in front of the, the entryway, and basically just sloping that up. So it's a flush transition into the building. And looking at that, we have a few panels here and there that would not be replaced and kind of given the condition that they're in. We thought it makes sense to just take it all out and put all new, basically kind of from where you can see where the, the main entrance will be down to the middle of the building south. And then it will have on the west side, a thickened curb. So when that side, obviously doing that parking there, if that's up to it, if that's ever reconstructed or work done, there's a thicker curb for it to meet up against, so it can, won't have to be replaced if the parking lot works.
I guess that's broken into two parts, the five foot by five foot stoop and then the rest of the sidewalk. And when you look at how it's broken down, they have the parts, you know, the, what's needed for materials, and then they end up with labor being, like I said, fourteen hundred dollars for pouring and troweling a five foot by five foot piece of cement. That's, that's where they really kill you on change orders. That's ridiculous. But at this point, I don't suppose we have much.
At this point, we probably.
It's why you would rather.
Set it.
Put something in first in the plans and remove it rather than.
Five by ninety-five sidewalk with curb and.
Yeah.
It's five hundred dollars more than a five by five stoop.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we approve change order.
Second.
Here we have a motion and a second to approve this change order. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Don?
Yes.
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 Mike?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number twenty-six is a resolution approving an amended plat.
So this is previously, council had referred an amended preliminary plat for the industrial park to be planned in zoning commission. Since then, we've amended it again. So this is not the same document that was referred to plan in zoning, but it's the same document that plan in zoning met and recommended approval of the changes coming in, out lot B and out lot C. Those sizes for stormwater management were adjusted back to the original size on the first preliminary design, just kind of putting together the situation for potential demand in the future, running through the scenarios. So really, the only thing that changes from the already approved preliminary design for this amended phase one preliminary design is lot seven here, which is south of, of our Popper Street will eventually be. We originally had, had to find it out to multiple lots, and we were just combining that into one large lot. B and C will still be owned by the city. But later on, with the agenda, we'll see why that is, because we have a party interested in buying that lot seven.
I guess I'd make the motion, we approved the final plat if it's been through plan and zoning, and they approved it.
I'll second.
Here we have a motion and a second to approve this amended preliminary plat. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Don?
Yes.
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 Mike?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number twenty-seven is a resolution approving the plat, final plat.
So this is the exact same version, just the final. So this is for phase one, and then as we go develop and there's demand for additional streets to go east, that's when we will do a preliminary and eventually final plot for out lot D, which is right now just a defined area. This approves creation of lots one through seven, as well as out lots A, B, and C to be owned by the city for stormwater management. And then lot A and lot B, those lots defined, which will be the location of future streets.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Harley, a second from Rodney. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Don?
Yes.
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 Mike?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number twenty-eight is a resolution involving Ayers and Cooney.
Barb, you want to speak on this one? Um, yeah. With the company wanting to buy out lot seven, they are not planning on making any, or building, constructing any buildings or hiring any jobs. It's going to be used basically for storage. So we are selling that lot at or above fair market value. And due to that, we have to go, we have to put their offer out for other people to bid on the property for thirty days. Consequently, we needed to hire Ayers and Cooney to do all the legal work for that. So twenty-eight, twenty-nine kind of run together. Twenty-nine is putting the property out for bid for thirty days and ordering us to put it in the newspaper. But twenty-eight is the engagement letter with Ayers, which they've basically already done the work. And then twenty-nine would be ordering the bid.
Motion to approve the engagement agreement with Ayers and Cooney.
Second.
Here we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Don?
Yes.
Julie? Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Motion carried. Then, uh, agenda item number twenty-nine is, is what Barb spoke over there. Is there anything?
One thing I did leave out is the reason we're having to do this, yes, we're selling it at or above fair market value, but we're purchasing this land with urban renewal funds, and that triggered the law that we have to put that together.
It's a very unique, very random piece of the state code. Ayers, I think, won't take too much time. That's one of those things that's technical and rare enough that it's good to have somebody who deals with that regularly to, to look over it. So this resolution will, will set the proceedings, the going on that land sale of the thirty-day intended bid. The notice will be published. The notice will be published on April 8th. The other proposals will be due by 1:00 p.m. on May 10th, and then a public hearing of proposals will be held on May 17th, that's worked by council meeting at 5:00. At that point, council will consider any and all other proposals received, and be able to make a decision on which of those proposals are in the best interest of the city. Beyond just the baseline price, there's much more to it in terms of, we have a development agreement, we're going to do a purchase agreement, that since this is unapproved at this time, when we go to put in infrastructure, and really the extension of Poplar Street, the owner of that property would be responsible for paying for half of those costs, because at that point, it will be served, whereas now, we don't have streets going to it, but like any development, once you put in infrastructure, it gets a whole lot more expensive. So, this will, you know, provide them the, what they need for the short term, but also provide a means of the value that will add to the property, as well as helping to finance the investment of that part. So the 30-day, you know, then submit a proposal that is better than the minimum laid out in the notice.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Don?
Yes.
Joey?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried. At only 6:35, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carried, meeting adjourned at 6:35, and should we reconvene then the work session?